Approval of the agenda. I have a letter here from Commissioner Mike Douglas, Commissioner of the Fifth District. He asked that I read this to your body, to the commission body. You two seem more related to the government. I know it's late, the commission meeting tonight. My apologies for that. With that being said, I am sending you a request to you all concerned with property possibly being sold for an entire shredding slash storage facility. After more information, concerns from the surrounding community given at the workshop meeting on Monday, October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, I have given this a thought. My request is for this property not to be sold for the intended purpose. Derek, is that your wish?
Yes, sir. This is my thing, sir.
Tyler?
Yes, sir. Can we ask Rusty to amend his motion that we don't sell the land at all?
We get that form, I make my motion, you can add to it. Do that work?
That'll work.
Also, I think, so if you're here about the landfill purpose, it's my understanding, I've talked to Mr. Coker, there'll be no vote taken here tonight on any landfill or anything, and not only that, but there's several items that these individuals have to present before they can even ask for a vote to be. Is that correct, Mr. Coker?
That's correct.
Okay, so there'll be no action at all taken on that, and we will assure you that once they come back to us asking for a public hearing, and they come with paperwork, we will notify everyone of this to, you know, have your voice heard. Moving on. I entertain motion for approval of the agenda.
Second.
For tomorrow's second power, vote please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes. The approval of the agenda has been settled. Any public comments on anything that we will be voting on tonight? The record state of public comment?
The landfill's not on the agenda.
No, ma'am. Okay, moving on down. Approval of previous monthly minutes?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve previous monthly minutes.
Have a motion by order?
Second.
Second is by Dwayne Gibson, vote please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes. Approval of previous monthly minutes has passed this body. No republic applications and approval. Motion by Holland. Seconded by Derek Sharp. Vote please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes. No republic applications has passed this body. Committee reports in minutes. This is from September the fourth, twenty twenty-five, county commission. September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, FMS. September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, building grounds. October sixth, twenty twenty-five, legislative affairs. October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, legislative affairs. October thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, budget and finance. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Stanfield. Seconded by Marlowe. Vote please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes. Committee reports in minutes has passed this body. Approval of budget amendments and other funding resolutions. I think some of you all were concerned about the school board and their budget. They approved our, uh, tonight.
Mr. Chairman.
Your order?
Make a motion to approve ten-one through ten-ten.
I'll second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Dwayne Kitt.
We're allowed to ask any question about what they discussed in the, in the meeting tonight?
We have no idea.
I know, so I'm asking, you know, we're allowed to ask them. For now.
If you ask for a.
Oh, that's, that's fine, that's fine, go ahead.
Good.
Go ahead.
Okay. Yes, I did.
Was we not supposed to suspend the rules for this?
Joe, I, I had read a comment that these would be added to the agenda and everything. Do we suspend the rules for this?
When, when was that comment made?
That workshop.
The workshop. You don't need to.
I was making sure.
All right. Any other discussion? Vote please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Eleven yes. One abstain, one no. The record state just had those budget minutes have passed. Okay, approved for credit card, uh, credit card for commissions five thousand one hundred dollars and seventy-five cents to the mayor's eight hundred dollars. I'll entertain a motion. Someone wish to, Mr. Chairman? Dwayne Gibson, motion. Seconded by Dwayne Kitt. Vote please. Don't try to. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes. Approval of the monthly travel credit card has passed this body. Reports from county officials, all departments, including Board of Education.
Mr. Chairman, we make a motion to approve the county official report.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by David Adams. Vote please. Dwayne Gibson. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes. Reports from county officials, all departments, including Board of Education, has passed this body. Moving on down. Organizations receiving contributions from the county. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Marlowe.
My commission technology, knowledge, research, and our constitution, the accuracy of the bullets and the agreements and the principles of the law.
I'll second his motion.
Seconded by Tyler, second by order. Vote please. Dwayne. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes. Organizations receiving contribution from county has passed this commission. Information, have anything come your way?
No.
You don't? Other matters, I think, are basically all yours, um, resolutions. And moving on down. Mayor? You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like for going to the river. October twenty-eighth, we're having a big multi-floor job fair. We have over thirty vendors. That will be a little small. This is the big one we have once a year. You have two years, this is a larger one, over thirty vendors already. So the thing I'd like to remind you that Jacksonville Veterans Breakfast will be, uh, November the first, eight AM to ten AM. Open Jacksonville First Baptist Church. And I would like to, I guess I should stand up, Donnie? Maybe you should too. I want to present. Couple weeks ago, we went to the conference, the fall conference of Tennessee County Services Association. About two months ago, we got an email saying, tell us something good that's happening in Campbell County. Randy wrote a pretty good story. I got not a story, but the truth, several pages. And took pictures and sent pictures in. What's happening in Campbell County, I just told you, the veterans breakfast. So we, we were into the fourth year of that right then. Feeding one hundred and fifty veterans a month down in Jacksonville. We have been joking softly, our sponsors are about, uh, we're doing at least four year of that. All right, we're doing it every. But he goes on to tell why it's a good thing for the community. And, you know, we started talking about this, but I think there was a couple commissioners, myself and Roger in the room. That was pretty much how we started talking about it. And it's, it's full of flesh. Roger, uh, has done a great job of organization and everything. But I want you all to know that your commissioners help us set up the tables, set the chairs. Some of them are there every Friday before this meeting at four-thirty. We help set up these chairs, set the tables, decorate the tables. We get sponsors, Randy and I, we get sponsors. They're willing to pay for the caterers and to pay people, uh, to feed them for the food. They have door prices. Pretty big undertaking for four years, but it's been working. It's worked well. So the Tennessee County Service Association presented this in Campbell County. Two thousand twenty-five Success Story Award is presented in Campbell County in recognition of its veterans appreciation bragglises. And it's signed with the chairman of that organization at the record. So, Mr. Bruce, this is for all of Campbell County. So we'd like to present it today, and we'll make it in the lobby with the others that we've gotten in packs. But we'll move forward.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rusty. How many of these have we won in the past?
So we. I think it's either three or four. We're actually Tennessee County Service Association, sixteen hundred commander, ninety-five members, ninety something road service members, I was telling the board. They all fit through this, and they go through them and find a true column. We've been suggesting, it's good to give it work in the state of Campbell County. We're moving forward.
Thanks, thank you, Randy. Also, if we have any veterans in the audience, uh, like Jack said, we meet the first Saturday in every month over here, and we meet every three months.
Quarter, please.
In, um.
Jellico.
Jellico. So please, if you're a veteran, we want to recognize you. Now, you fought for this country and everything. We, like I said, we, it, it's an honor for us to go set up and just to.
You must write to say here, uh?
Yes, it does.
It does, certainly does.
So, like I said, if there are any veterans here, please, we, we're inviting you to come. And if there was any, most Patrick's here, uh, allow me, any veterans out there in Campbell County that would like to come to our veterans breakfast, please do so. We have a good time, good fellowship. Mayor, that's.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on down to recognizing commissioners introducing resolutions and proposals for debate. Okay, go to your first one. I, Charles Baird, county commissioner, oh, on the fourth district, hereby submit the following motion for approval at the county commission meeting held on October twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Approved contract between Provision Cloud Connect FYP twenty twenty-five dash twenty twenty-six and Campbell County Board of Education. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by advocates. Vote please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes, that motion has passed. Anything else, Mr. Baird?
No, I think I'll thank you.
Dwayne, your name.
I, Dwayne Baird, county commissioner of the third district, hereby submit the following motion for approval at county commission meeting held on October twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Motion one, approve the trade of a twenty-twenty Dodge Durango van, one C four R D J F L G two L C two eight six five 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 to the property assessor's office for the sheriff's department and the transfer of a twenty-seventeen Jeep Renegade, VIN number Z A C C J A A B H P E four six one five zero to the sheriff's department or property assessor's office. Dwayne, is that your motion?
Sheriff, is that still your wish?
Yes.
Okay, have a motion, I have a second.
My motion, my motion to approve.
Okay, seconded by Dwayne Gibson, vote please.
Mr. Chairman, can you very, very please?
John. Yeah, I appreciate that. Hey, vote.
Vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes, that motion passed. Y'all got to get their VIN numbers a little small. Ms. Baird.
I, Beverly Hall, county commissioner of the second district, hereby submit the following motion for approval at county commission meeting held on October twentieth, twenty twenty-five. The approved recognition of Joe Bruce.
Best on the list, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Dwayne Kitt. Vote please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Ms. Joe, she, she's a good, she was a good. Okay, Dwayne Kitt.
I, Dwayne Kitt, county commissioner of the second district, hereby submit the following three motions for approval at county commission meeting held on October twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Motion one, approve Campbell County Board of Education contract with personal computer systems in contract by cybersecurity pilot program. Is that your motion?
It is, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rusty Or. Vote please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes. Motion one has passed. Motion two, approve purchase and subscription services agreement with Rapture Technologies and the Campbell Board of Education. Is that your motion?
It is, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Zach Marlowe. Vote please. Dwayne Gibson. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes, that motion also passed. Motion three. Okay, we will have to wait till next month to do that. Then when this kind of is not here.
Yes.
Dwayne, is that all?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. Zach?
I, Zach Marlowe, first district permission, submit the following two motions for approval at county commission meeting held on October twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Motion one, approval of the twenty-twenty-six legislative agenda as approved by the legislative affairs. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Rusty Or. Vote please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes, that motion has passed. Motion two, approve statutory committee, statutory committee assignments to include FMS committee, agricultural committee, as recommended by the mayor, insurance personnel, and the fearful committees. Is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Tyler King. Vote please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes. Motion two has passed. Zach is running it. At the end?
Yes, sir.
Let me forget it, okay? Okay, Rusty?
Yes, sir.
I, Rusty Or, third district commissioner, hereby, hereby submit the following motion for approval at county commission meeting held on October twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Motion one, authorize ambulance service director to apply for an EMS equipment grant. There is no local match required and should result in the ambulance service receiving funding of approximately twenty-five thousand dollars. Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Scott Stan. Vote please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes. Rusty, that's all, correct? You said the one?
No, we have the one of retract, you know, probably.
Okay, okay, yes, I'm sorry. Okay, would you like to?
Mr. Chairman, I guess, uh, a few months ago, we, I'm sorry. A few months ago, we had actually looked at a company buying the property from the county over in Jellico. And, uh, we had actually decided to send that to IDV, which is industrial development board. And my understanding, there's only two ways that we can dispose of property. One surplus and the other is through IDV, which they work out agreements. But in light of what we've been hearing and what we've been seeing, uh, we discussed it last week about retracting, uh, that property back from IDV. Mayor, they've not signed anything, did any agreements. So it's still sitting there. So that's my motion, and I think Tyler has a amendment to add to it, and I'll accept him, sure.
Amendment to say that we don't want to sell it.
So with the recommendation from Tyler and, and Mr. Sharp and Mike's letter, I'll take and accept that, that we will not sell the property at this time. Is that fine with you all? So we're going to retract it. Motion is retract, and at this point in time, we're not interested in selling or disposing of it through IDV.
Scott, you have a second? Okay. The, uh, Tyler, is that what you want?
Yes, sir.
Derek?
Yes, sir.
Is that your motion, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Scott, is that your second?
It is.
Vote please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Twelve yes, one no. Motion passed. We look back, we come back to the camp. Okay? Rusty, anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Um, Scott, I think you'd like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
We will.
Anyone make that motion?
I don't know. Never save it all the way, except for talk.
Yeah, we discussed that last week also.
Yeah, there's, there's just one motion. There's two on this one.
I make motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, I have a motion to suspend the rules, I have a second. Seconded by Beverly Hall. Vote for suspension.
I know you can vote no.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Eleven yes, the rules have been suspended. And, uh, Scott, I'll go ahead, you have the two motions, and I'll go. Motion one, approve change order number one on the airport mega project to reduce the overall contract amount by sixty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-six cents, and to increase the project completion period by forty days from July second, twenty twenty-five, to August eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Is that your motion?
It is.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Adams. Vote please.
Mr. Chairman, before we vote, just had a committee meeting.
We did.
We did. It came out of committee, didn't it?
We came out of committee.
Because that was brought up last, last meeting. I think everything needs built for the proper committee. Sometimes you can, sometimes you can't.
Maybe, Mike. Anybody wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes, motion one has passed. Motion two, approve payment to PGA Inc. in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-two cents, which represents the remaining balance on PGA Pay App number eight and PGA Pay App number nine after payment was made on October tenth, twenty twenty-five to PGA subcontractors and suppliers by dual-party checks issued by Campbell County on behalf of PGA Inc. Is that your motion?
It is.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by David Adams.
This, we're paying them directly, and this takes care of the work that's already been done, correct?
Take care of the work, yeah, it's my.
Okay.
Vote please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Twelve yes, one no, motion two has passed. Over the airport make, I'm sorry, Scott, I have one more for you to.
Just for information purpose, in order for us to be able to decrease the amount, there had to be, it had to be done that way. In any future projects, if it's money coming back to the county, it has to be done the same way we just did that one.
It's still a, Mr. Chairman, it's still a change order, but it's a good change order.
It's a good change order.
It's kind of money coming back.
Either, either way it is, it's got to be done as a change order, whether we're getting money back or spending more money out. There's no other ways around it according to our finance director at the time, Jeff Marlowe.
Okay, Scott, you have one more. It's approve the FYP twenty-twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six airport maintenance grant.
It is.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Tyler King. Vote please. Anyone wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Thirteen yes, that motion. Tap them down all over. There you go. Got it? Okay. Zach? Just what you have. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, David, thank you. Well, may I have ten motions to suspend the rules? Motion by. Seconded by Stanfield. Vote for us suspension of the rules.
The shirt was suspended on the partnership.
All right, anybody wish to change their vote? Show the vote, please. Twelve yes, one no. The rules are unsuspended, we're back in regular session now. Thank you, David. Uh, Zach?
Just for thinking, when I received a letter from T-DAG, I'm in Maryland, and she and David, we pursued it, and I just want to read it for the record. Um, it was written to me because I'm chair of the solid waste board, and it said, the Tennessee Department of Environment Conservation Division Solid Waste Management is pleased to inform you that Campbell County Municipal Solid Waste Region achieved twenty-five percent waste reduction and diversion goals as presented in Tennessee statute of table sixty-eight, batch two eleven, batch eight sixty-one. The Tennessee Solid Waste Processing and Disposal World at four hundred dash eleven dash oh one dash nine. According to the solid waste diversion gathered as part of the twenty-twenty-four annual progress report, the region achieved a thirty-two percent diversion rate. Department also received the yearly update to the region's ten-year solid waste plan. So I just want to commend, uh, David for that, as well as the mayor's office. I know that they work to try to get that diversion rate up.
Thank you.
Chairman, I have a couple items I'd like to discuss. I'd like to make an announcement, the heroes night on the hill will be at Campbell County High School at the ballgame on Friday night, and they'll be recognizing the first responders and the veterans. And also, I've got a, a statement from the school board. They'd like to congratulate Coach Johnny Bruce on naming the Jacksonville Middle School Football Stadium his honor. So congratulations, Coach Bruce. I want to add that I know a couple guys that laid the foundation for that team right there.
You were the foundation, right?
Love you, Coach.
Love you too. Thank you, guys, I appreciate that. And I appreciate the school board for giving, uh, they.
Well deserved.
Well, I go too, laid the foundation too.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Dwayne?
I'd like to say, I'd like to schedule a recreation committee meeting for next Wednesday at five o'clock.
Next Wednesday at five o'clock, man?
Mr. Chairman, um, I just like to say, I know we're not going to make voting on the landfill tonight, but I've got a petition here. I just started this petition on Friday. There's already four hundred and eighty-seven signatures against it. So that's what we stand for.
As I said, Mr. Coker and I talked today about the issue and everything, and, uh, simple, we will keep you up to date on everything that, that we get and everything. Tyler and Derek and Michael will know ahead of time and stuff, and if, and if there is going to be a public hearing, then you guys will know ahead of time, you know, when it comes, and, uh.
And when we do have, if we do have a public hearing, we'll have it at Wannup Schools, so everybody can count.
All right.
Tyler will be bringing drinks and pizza. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Under the Jackson law, this, nobody can't come and force this to the county without the Jackson law. Am I correct? They've been called across the state, and I'm, and I'm sure some of the people have lost lives. Work utility company, I hope you went to leave. The, uh, I lost my train of thought about that. Going across the state, and I, I've actually, and I'm sure some of you have too, uh, the states, at the state level, they can override us, and there's been some talk that they're trying to build some more landfills across the state of Tennessee. So, but just don't stop here. It starts in actual also.
Reach up to them.
Yeah, so don't, don't, don't think that we can do what we can do, and somebody.
Appreciate you coming. We appreciate your voice and everything.
Well, the best pledge allegiance I've heard in a while was the crowd that we had.
Yeah, it was, very good. Uh, any, anything else?
Mr. Chairman, Derek? I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. And I want you all to know that I am in agreement with all of you all about this landfill and the tire recycle place and everything that's been talked. I'm standing with you, I think Tyler and Mike are too, it looks like, so just want to let you all know that.
Thank you.
Any, any other statements?
Motion, Jerry.
Motion, Jerry. Thank you all for coming.